Let's go.
All right. If everybody would please take notice of the exits. Here we have in the back, the right and behind me. And if you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
And welcome to the planning board meeting this evening. Did the board have an opportunity to review the minutes for January?
Yes.
Both Januaries, yes? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
I'll say.
Thank you. Jason, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You know, that's the approval. So we have two public hearings on the agenda. For Kemco. No, nobody's here for that.
Hey, John?
Yes, sir.
Now with the snow on the ground, it's a good time to sort of glance up in there. And on that, there are two lots, get an idea what the heck's going on.
So I'll have Dan fill you in. There's some confusion about all that, but you're right. Apparently they flagged it, but I'll let Dan.
Yeah, I mean, the wetland specialist said that he had flagged some wetlands towards the bottom of the property. And we've been asking for that to be surveyed for, I don't know, seven, eight, nine, 10 months. I don't know what it is at this point. But recently, actually, I was just driving by there and I saw some flags there. So they're there. They got to locate them and they got to put them on the map and tell us what they are.
You saw flags where the wetlands supposed to... Okay.
Yep.
You should survey them right after the flag. Otherwise, if you lose some flags, the integrity of the system is... The integrity of delineation is gone. I don't know if that delineation is still... If they go to flag it, is it can be trusted at this point? I mean, they may have lost some of the flags.
And this is the frustration here with this. And we've done a lot of talking. Is there anyone here who would have liked to have spoke about the Kemco development project?
Do we have to make a motion to open the meeting?
We...
It's already open.
Yeah. No, we have to reopen it.
You can make a motion to reopen.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. Good evening, Mr. Crane.
Good evening.
And I'd like to apologize about this. We're doing things to try to curtail this from happening going forward. The primary issue that we recognize is that the notices went out a year ago. Approximately, I don't know the exact date. And the public is unaware of these adjournments, so...
I took an interest in it when it began and the project was first proposed to you. The three main issues in my mind. One is it's on a steep slope. The comprehensive plan states we should prohibit development on steep slopes, so there's an issue there. Then the other issue is the trees, which the last I heard, the applicant said he's going to cut approximately 80 trees. It was very vague and put in four. Now, that combining with a steep slope, if the trees are preventing erosion and mudslides and so on, that's a disaster. And now we have a third problem. It's actually four problems. And the fourth problem with the... The third problem is the wetlands. And the fourth problem is they never show up. So I don't know how long the board can... To me, from the outside, it looks like it's been over backwards to give them an opportunity to go forward. I'm getting a little tired of showing up, too.
Right. Understood, Mr. Crane.
Anyway, but I appreciate, you know, you're the ones that have to deal with it, so...
We're going to talk a little bit about how we're...
You know, to remain another... I would say, you're done. You had your chance. You're done. I don't know what the board's obligations are, obviously. Somebody doesn't show up to my office hours 10 straight times, you know, I don't really want to see the student again.
Right.
You had your opportunities. I came to office hours 10 times to... This isn't the way we run life.
So you say we give him an F? Expel him from school?
Yeah. Withdrawal.
Withdrawal. Very good. So if... We have an attorney representing us today in Craig Sted. You could please introduce yourself.
Jim Haran from Wallace &amp; Wallace. So with respect to the, you know, the status of the application, I agree with, you know, your comments. And, you know, one of the issues, though, is that, you know, the applicant is entitled to at least some due process. I think what would be appropriate for the board to do is to authorize that a letter be sent by the secretary for the planning board on behalf of the board to instruct the applicant to appear at the next meeting and, you know, provide the information that is... has been requested regarding the wetland mapping. If they don't have that information available, then either put, you know, a reasonable timeline at which time it would be available, or if they have taken a position that their hired professional has been under due process for them, one of the things you can put in the letter is if you don't address it, then, you know, we will deem the application to be not sufficient to meet the criteria for an approval and, you know, it may be denied. So, I mean, it's... The obligation is on the applicant to satisfy the conditions in the town code for granting subdivision approval. And to the extent the applicant is unwilling to submit the information that the board needs to grant an approval, the applicant will get it denied.
I think your letter... The letter should also point to all other outstanding items in...
Yes.
In Craig's letter. Comment letter.
In my...
And Dan's.
In... Yep. What's that?
Especially Dan's.
Especially.
Yes.
Especially Dan's letter. And, you know, two months is generous, in my opinion.
I just think that, you know, because of the weather conditions and things, I don't think it's necessarily feasible for them to get something done right now, but, you know, I think you give them the benefit of the... You know, give them at least a little bit of latitude. But, you know, should they have the information beforehand and they want to provide it and schedule it, you know, ahead of time, I think the deadline is probably near approaching.
It's March 4th.
The only thing that... Oh, March 4th?
What's the deadline for the submission?
The March 4th would be for the March meeting.
Yeah.
How many extensions have... When does the current extension...
It's not an extension right now. This is a continued adjournment of the public hearing.
Because they haven't met Dan's simple request of getting the wetlands delineated on the plan.
Right, right. On the... How long has this been going on?
Quite a long time.
Several months, right?
Mike Gillespie's office, that's right.
Yeah.
My suggestion is push them and make it the next meeting.
I think that's... What am I confused about now? You said two planning board meetings?
Yeah, I mean, so if you put it for the next meeting, then, you know, I mean, you can certainly put it, you know, for them to make a submission for the next meeting. You know, I think that I would delay acting on the application at the next meeting, but, you know, give them an opportunity to submit. I mean, you could certainly do that. You know, one of the things that, you know, that we... I was thinking about is if they want to switch, you know, professionals and go to a different professional, the new professional wouldn't be ready to do any submissions for the next meeting. So that was basically what... The reason why I suggested, you know, two meetings. But should they, at the next meeting, you know, say that they're going to switch professionals and, you know, make a submission for the April meeting, then, you know, that would work as well.
Now, I understand that the applicant is entitled to due process, as you're supporting here, but what about the public?
You know, unfortunately, as a general rule, due process is afforded to, you know, the people in the system rather than the people outside the system. So, for example, you've got a criminal defendant, right? So the criminal defendant gets the due process, not the public at large. Even though, you know, in the state of New York, the case is people versus defendant's name, you know, the people really don't have that... The people don't get the due process, right? It's the defendant.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
The... What's compelling us to keep the meeting open? Why not just... Let's just say for the extent they've abandoned the project. I mean, it would certainly look like it right now.
Yeah.
Why would you carry this along?
Well, they had requested it, so to the extent they had requested an adjournment, then, you know, it's not... I would say they've taken an affirmative act. They didn't request an adjournment?
Didn't?
Oh, okay. So I'm confused, then, with the... Who sent the email? Requesting the adjournment? Oh, okay. All right.
My impression was that we're keeping it open because we opened it and once we close it, then we set a clock going.
Correct, 62 days.
That means that we have to act within 62 days.
Correct.
But I've also understood in the past, we could reopen a meeting. We can... If they present new information to us that the public wasn't privy to, we can reopen a meeting again.
Well, again, so the action... You have to take action within 62 days. Action within the 62 days would also include denying.
Yeah, but if I... Let's say they do get back on board and they come back and they show us wetlands and then we say, all right, well, now we need... Let's open up the meeting. Then does the clock reset from that meeting?
Are you saying that they have to submit new notices and we're going to schedule another public hearing?
Yeah. Whatever the requirement is to setting a new meeting.
I was just curious whether you're talking about a hearing or not or some other...
Yeah.
Yeah. They have a sketch approval at this point.
So, I mean, you... So if you were going to close... If you were going to close the public hearing and deny the application, you know, if that was the choice, I mean, the problem is that...
I wouldn't conjoin that. I'm not stating one way or the other.
No, I'm right. So when you close the public hearing, if you do not take action within 62 days, then there is a default approval. So the board would have to act within 62 days. And if it did not act in 62 days, then there would be preliminary approval.
All right. Now, going along that line, what constitutes acting? Can I ask in the... I said a new public hearing and we start the clock again?
No. Well, I mean, you couldn't... You couldn't... You wouldn't... I don't believe you'd be able to reopen the public hearing without the consent of the applicant at that point.
For the fact that there was no notification or anything and there's been no action, can we simply close it and deny it?
Yes.
And kill it?
There's been no action to date. We've been putting it off.
So why don't we just put an action...
We've been accommodating.
What was your question today?
My question is if there's been no action, there was no notification, then we close the public hearing and deny the application and move on.
To our benefit, to the extent that it shows that there's a process, we're giving this kind of this opportunity, but now here's some deadlines if you don't meet them.
Here's my question. And maybe I just don't want to delay everything, but the fact again that to the public's point, there's been multiples and it's been extended and there's been no action, there's been no further motion. So we're following through and providing the process and there's nothing coming from that side. My feeling is, but my feeling is that we've done enough. I feel like we should just move forward and close and move on.
If we close the public hearing tonight, we've got 62 days or whatever it is to take an action. Okay? That means that also within that 62 days, they have the opportunity to provide for us the missing information that we've been seeking for X number of months. Okay? And it's the same... If we do that, we're putting them on... We're putting them on notice, saying notice that if we were being... If we just kept the meeting open and sent a letter. I think that at this point, we need to take a stronger action and then it's up to us in the next two months to make a decision.
So with respect to closing the public's hearing, one of the issues is that as a general rule, once you close the public hearing, you cannot introduce any new evidence unless the public hearing is reopened. And that would require the consent of the applicant. Should you not reopen the public hearing, there is some potential for outside parties to challenge any approval that might be granted by the board.
Okay, but excuse me for interrupting, but if we close the public hearing, okay, the applicant cannot submit any new information.
Right.
Okay. At this point, the information that is incomplete to begin with, okay? So, but you made the statement that the only way the public hearing can be opened is by request of the applicant.
Well, I'm just... So this is a very complicated issue because of the default approval provisions. My recommendation would... If you're going to give the applicant another shot at submitting information, my advice would be not to close the public hearing because that... Now you're into a generally uncharted legal ground.
But the applicant has to respond. If the applicant wants to keep the application going, he's got to respond.
Right.
Within that time period and it's up to him.
So, I mean, I would... I fully would, you know, I would agree that if you want to adjourn it to the next meeting and basically provide a letter that says if you do not respond by the next meeting, that you will deem the application being complete and you will deny it or potentially deny it. I think that would be appropriate, but leave the public hearing open because the problem is that once the public hearing becomes closed, the applicant gets rights under the default approval provision and it becomes a very complicated legal issue. Whereas if you keep... And again, as a general rule, when you close a public hearing, the record stops for the most part.
But if... Okay, so if we close the public hearing and the applicant does not make any new submissions and the... We're saying that he can't make any new submissions. Right.
See, Pete, the way this is supposed to work, what I mean to interrupt you, is exactly how the solar farm worked, right? If you have a complex application and the public is...
This is not a hard charge.
Exactly. It's charged and they want... So if you remember, they submitted new information, they made changes, the public got to comment on the adjournment, and that went on for quite some time, but it was the evolving process that was constructed. And we took it to a point where not everybody was happy and not everybody was unhappy. It's kind of, you know, the way it should go. They're not participating in submitting the information that Dan needs.
Yeah. Well, what's scaring us... What's scaring us about default approval?
Nothing. We just have to follow...
In other words...
That's all.
Correct me if I'm wrong. If we close the public hearing and at the end, within the next 62 days, we have a meeting or we have two meetings and they have not submitted anything or made a request to submit new information, why cannot we make a motion to not... To cancel the... Or not approve?
Well, you certainly are free to do that. The problem becomes if you close the public hearing and the applicant submits new information, there is some question asked of whether or not the board can...
Yeah, if I can...
Whether or not the board can what?
Consider the new information. You're creating a legal issue whereas, you know, third parties may challenge a... So should the applicant provide information that satisfies all the concerns of the board and the board is now in a position to grant an approval? Because you closed the public hearing, you've now raised a legal issue that may actually challenge the legal ground to challenge that approval.
But you stated... You stated that the applicant can on request...
Well, you need their permission.
The applicant can make a request to have a new public hearing. Is that correct?
They could certainly do that. I just don't... I know of no cases where that's happened. So that's created a murky legal issue that you wouldn't necessarily have to raise if you left the public hearing open. Because the other thing that you had an obligation to do is you have to reach a secret determination before you can approve or deny the application. So you also have to make a secret determination before you reach a decision.
You can mention a... Let's see.
The secret...
What can I do to respond? Because we've already had a number of times where the response was, we're not ready. Oh, we need this, we need that, we need another extension. But we don't...
No, I mean, response is information responsive.
Response is actual tangible information that we can use.
Correct.
Because no response to me would be like, well, I tried contacting you.
Right.
Just push it out.
Right. No. A response...
A motion on you.
Right. Information... Information responsive to the request of, you know, of Dan and questions at the times that I've made in the past.
All right. If I could comment, please. I think the fear or my concern about opposing the... It's the reason why I asked the question is once we close the meeting, we've severely limited our ability to act on this. If we want him to give us information, we've got 62 days, maybe he does it early and starts to do the right thing and give us the information, we will not have enough time to act and get this done. So I'm... At this point, I love the opinion, let's give him one last warning and then if he doesn't respond, then we can deem him inactive or, you know, at that point, we can deny it and we can close the meeting.
I'll just remind you, the one reason that... The one main reason that this continues to get pushed out is because our code requires for the larger course of wetland permitting that there's a public hearing on that as well. So this is a subdivision public hearing. And if he shows us the wetlands and if they require town permitting, then we have to have a public hearing on that aspect as well. And I don't see how we can close a subdivision public hearing because we're going to have to make a secret determination, but we don't know about the wetlands. We've been asking about the steep slopes. We've been asking about some design criteria that needs to be shown, the five advisory board head comments on the T-type turnaround. There's a lot of stuff going on there that hasn't been addressed, so...
Yes.
So there might be a second public hearing anyway.
Well, if we... Those wetlands qualify and that's the whole point of why we need to have it shown on the map.
And we're not going to be taking a secret determination until it's been delineated on the map, we've closed the public hearing. And the conditions have... We're not going to close the public hearing.
Well, I believe you can run a public hearing for the wetland permitting and subdivision concurrent.
Right, exactly.
So you don't have to have a suspension. Those public hearings can happen.
I just think if we close it, we're going to be handcuffed. We're restricted.
To any variables, legal variables that could affect us negatively.
I mean, I get what you're saying. I get what you're saying. I feel just like you.
No, I just wanted to add to closure. I want to be able to shut the door on this at some point. I just want it to give us a little bit of a little peace and then we just keep pushing it down the street. When she knows what's going to happen?
Yes.
I'll pull her right now to the film. That's exactly what's going to happen. So what we're going to do going forward, Jason, if you'll back me up on this, we'll issue this letter in the future, earlier in the process when we run into this kind of thing.
In the future, we're not going to the public hearing until they have everything.
There you go.
That's what we've talked about.
That's a solution.
That's a solution.
But, you know, in the event that we, you know, for example, like the one in the states, they ran into that unforeseen issue where they did their due diligence, but we ran into a problem with inflation and all of that, we got the letter and we moved on.
Yeah.
So at this point, we're not going to go two meetings. We're going to go one meeting, certainly. Okay? And do you need any more information, Ethan?
I can suggest that you would make a motion to have the town attorney in conjunction with the land secretary prepare a letter sent out.
I'll direct the letters to be sent out on the board's letterhead to the applicant and to the professional.
I'll make a motion for the town attorney to draft a letter that gets sent out to the applicant requesting their attendance at the next meeting and to provide some of the information we've been requesting in past meetings.
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second item on your public hearing is the Zudo hotline. Anyone here? Are they representing the applicant?
Yeah, the applicant sends an email earlier asking to be adjourned on this one. They're... They've made progress from DEC, but they haven't finalized it and the health department, they're doing a subject plan and they expect that approval soon, so they give a stop date on that.
So Jim, you know, you made a comment about the weather. Now, I think that the weather's been fine, quite honestly.
Yeah.
With the exception of, you know, the other day.
Sure.
And a couple of rainstorms, but it's not as though we've had so much snow that this couldn't have been done.
But no, I don't, you know, and you're right. I mean, just... And, you know, to the point, I mean, I think that, you know, the applicant needs to have a consultant to be there to verify the flags. I believe usually they do coordinate with the surveyor, but you're right. You know, particularly with snow on the ground, you know, the flags may have been, you know, knocked down, maybe the flags may have been... Usually the flags are numbered when they do the markings and they have to be... The surveyor has to, you know, catalyze all the numbers to, you know, month to month. Yeah, I mean, that's something that needs to be done.
Only that, there's been a couple of rainstorms, though. Actually, they provided good information in the field.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, from a wetland's point of view, you know, it's not, you know, April when it's probably the rest, but it's been pretty wet this year.
I had a misread. This is... This issue's going to get more prominent because DEC is changing their rules on wetlands. They're not going to... They're actually going away from map wetlands.
Right.
Which means now we're really going to need the applicants to go out and survey what the... Well, I'm not sure as what delineate wetlands. We can no longer rely on DEC's maps and they've lowered what they consider a state... They're going to lower what they consider a state.
Where do you have?
Where do you have? From 10, 12 down to 7 or something like that. Yes.
But if we do our job right, we won't go through on this problem because they'll have to do that before they can...
Yes.
Before we go to a public meeting.
This is the problem, it's the ambiguous nature of whether there's a wetland. And what was nice about the maps is it was in dispute, there's a wetland there. Now, we're gonna be, for lack of better word, fighting with them over whether there might be one that's there.
Where, though, it makes sense to me is that property by the fire is property on Green Haven.
Corners.
The corners there. That property, uh, it was a full acre pond after the last rainstorm. I don't know if you remember, there's a culvert that goes across Beakman Road. And it's a small concrete pipe, about six to eight inches, flowing like a stream. And the entire corner was a pond.
Where's the water go from the corner?
It goes under Green Haven into the water. You should have seen the erosion and the cut that was made down there. And according to, uh, the architect or engineer, there was no wetlands in that area.
You'd be practical about the whole thing, there's a pipe that comes into your property.
It's not big enough.
Well, fine, if you want it, it was gonna go out.
Okay.
Wrong project.
Wrong project, all right, under discussion. Safe payment.
No, 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 I don't think you made a motion for the Zudo.
Oh. So, can I have a motion, Mr. Trump? Would you like to speak, Mr. Trump?
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
You should go with the exact date, please.
For the next, uh...
Do you want it March?
We'll go to the next one.
That's on March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
I made a motion to adjourn to the March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Second?
Certainly.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And did we, uh, do we need to vote for leave to prepare the letter? Or is that necessary?
That was the next thing, we can really do that.
So the discussion for a safe payment and a charter.
Do you think Jim reverse for that thing, I guess?
Aye, Jim.
If the key here is the need to get reapproval since time has run out so they could build the portion of the site they did not build, that was my understanding, is doing the finances and the time to get the finances together. But now, certain finances is we're able to do all of it.
Do they have the financing yet?
Yes. All dependent upon, a lot of finances is based on how much money people will donate. They're confident about that. They have a commitment, but nothing. Exactly, but it's, it's, it's not true, though, because if they get approval, these people will hear. So it's a ten, which is halfway between.
Okay.
From what I understand.
Is anything changed to the plan?
No. No, there's no one to.
Where do we leave off at this, Dan?
All right, so, uh, the applicant received from this board on February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two, a reapproval of the conditional site plan especially use permit. And that was conditioned on a number of things, including satisfying the original November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty resolution, the site plan especially use permit approval. So our code's hundred and eighty days, site plan expires unless you ask for an extension. So that had expired, um, and so now they've asked for it again. I think the one thing I would add to what Joe had mentioned was that in December of two thousand twenty-three, Josephine Santoro, who's the applicant, um, sent an email and mentioned that she's also getting, applying for grant money from the state, so I don't know, that might be, that might be some of the ways to help her get to that point. If you recall, the phase one work that has to be done is construction of a parking area for the building that's there. And it was critical for that parking lot to be done because there are contaminated soils beneath it, and the remediation for that was capping it with the asphalt.
And that hasn't been done yet?
No.
Basically, there's no work coming in?
No.
And those grants are subject to any approvals, obviously. That's why they're, she feels they'll get them, but they can't even be secured unless you have a ballot cycle. So it's a chicken or the egg, I guess.
Are the committed funds sufficient to complete the project?
I can't answer that because a lot of those are subject to having it, people could pull them back, but I've been told they're confident they can get them.
So, Dan, what are we here to do right now?
Well, they're asking for a reapproval, similar to what we've done before for this.
So their approval has expired?
It is expired again, the last time it was, was February seventeenth of two thousand twenty-two. So that's expired by now.
Basically, we have no approval, we can't do anything. And without their approval, there's no chance of getting the funds. There's no chance of getting the funds approved from the bank, then come back and get the approval, they kind of go together.
Why did the approval expire?
Well, they weren't able to, you know, per the applicant, they weren't able to fund the construction that was required as part of phase one.
And how long does it take before approval expires?
It's a hundred and eighty days.
A hundred and eighty days.
Yeah, so if you were to grant a hundred and, uh, a reapproval this evening, the approval would go through August thirteenth of two thousand twenty-four. That's a hundred and eighty days from now. Of course, they can ask for an extension if they need it, but...
So our conditional final approval has expired?
Yes.
Once they start construction, don't you have a year to complete the construction?
So in our town, because it's a special use permit as well, you have to start construction within one year of the date of the final site plan and complete it within two years. So, um, but part of it is getting the conditions for satisfying the site plan so that the site plan can actually get signed.
Dan, what's the remaining conditions that they need for the conditional approval?
Uh, I'd probably have to go through that, it's been a long time. But I don't believe that there were many of them left. They, they've established a performance bond that was filed with the Beekman Town Board already. So the Town Board had a resolution accepting that performance bond and the performance bond agreement. So there really was a very limited amount of things that needed to be done to be able to finalize it.
Hold on, SWIP?
Um, yes, there was a SWIP and, um...
I'm not aware if they did it in a while, or you were aware.
I'd have to check, to be honest with you.
I'm coming into this.
Yeah, I know you are.
The board knows, I'm coming in to help out because I was involved with the remediation only.
And then just explain that.
I forgot that.
They went to the other engineer who is no longer involved.
Right.
So because it's a good cause, I've volunteered to help them out, get them out of this. My only involvement was with solving the remediation, getting that approved by the D E C.
Yeah, so, um, just, you know, a little bit of history of the project. A long time ago, the board had granted them an approval to construct a building that was donated to them, but they weren't allowed to have a C of O until they actually finalized the site plan. So the building's sitting there, there's some improvements that had been done. And then unfortunately for the applicant, uh... There were some soils that were recorded on the site. Don't have to take free soil from very far away. It's a lesson that you learn for a lot of people, unfortunately. And of course, the, you know, the, they had to do a process to get a D E C approval for the remediation. So Joe had helped out with that aspect. Chuck Nagle's the landscape architect, he was running the project through. So, um, that brings us to where we are. They got the approval in two thousand twenty, came back to the reapproval in two thousand twenty-two. You'll probably recall that there was some discussion about changing it so that they didn't have to do the parking lot and capping that. And, uh, and the board had determined that that would constitute relooking at seeker because part of the seeker of the phase one approval was getting that area capped and stabilized.
We eliminated test wells.
Yeah, maybe we modified the D E C permit because the D E C now was capping. Make sure it never touched it by being a party. So we visited the D E C as well, that was part of that. The D E C was not just concerned about being capped, they didn't want it to be exposed as a lawn or anything, where, you know, like Lufkin, I remember that, they wanted it capped and controlled. And one of the control, it was a surface that wouldn't allow water into it.
Even removing the ventilation, I remember was a problem, the geologist was scared.
Yes.
So until it was ready to be capped.
Yes, yeah. Scott Geiger was involved.
And even the stormwater had some miners and things like that so that it wouldn't, you know, push water in towards that contaminated soil and possibly push that through.
Exactly.
The contaminants are very slow moving, which is, which is the benefit of the fact that this has lasted so long. At least we know that they're very slow and contaminated, so at least we're, we feel probably pretty good that they're not migrating into the wetlands right next to it.
It would take more than that to move.
Yeah.
What's the process of reapproval as opposed to granting extension? Do they have to go back, do they have to do a hearing, is it the other...
So, you know, because of the fact that there's no substantive changes to the project, you know, the board can determine that does not constitute reopening a seeker and, you know, consider reaching public hearing and things and just granting a reapproval based on what we approved before. That's what we did in February of two thousand twenty-two. When they, when they wanted us changing in February of two thousand twenty-two, we told them, I shouldn't say we, just the board, and directed them that if, uh, if they did that, that would reopen the entire process from step one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you need more time to review this to determine if nothing's changed, or?
No, there's no, there's no new information you can present. They're basically coming back with the exact plan as it was and just asking for that reapproval so that they can try to work that grant angle and...
Should I have your representation?
I'm satisfied with that, I got it.
Thank you.
Motion to...
Reapproval?
Also move.
Dan, is that what this resolution is?
Yeah, I prepared a resolution, more potentially of consideration.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, so that's good to know, this is thirteen, two thousand twenty-two, so. If there's no movement, Joe might want to ask for an extension this time.
The next item on the agenda is three hours.
Hello, this is John Kail from D E C Media. We're presenting a personal interest for this subdivision project. Basically, uh, Dan, I've been speaking about swarm water stuff recently. It's been the, uh, the niche for us on the park. The last mission we've made was, so, normal for, you know, residents, but the, uh, the, uh, opinions about the level of effort we're putting in with the place, Dan, and the, uh, the D E C, uh, together for a formal report here, which, uh, maybe Dan can make. Basically, confusion in our part was, um, because it's a subdivision, the three individual lots, I had no kind of development, there was no infrastructure, roads, drainage, anything like that. It was really hard to, I don't know, put together a SWIP to cover all three lots. You had to work seven individual lots, and it was, it was only, it was only the SWIP. So in my mind, I needed three individual SWIPs, one for each lot. And if I looked at three individual SWIPs, each one was under running very disturbance. In my mind, it's a simple SWIP, this time. But we've now been educated that we were to prepare three individual SWIPs for a formal post-construction treatment. So, um, more about the process of relooking at the sites. I took the middle one, which would be the most difficult site, designed Rain Garden, and enhanced some of the other, you mentioned, we ran through all the headshots for how to get out of something like that. Prepared drawings, figures, specifications. Everything's done, um, but it's also just approval. We have the other two ready to go, and hopefully we can end this and see the approval on the board.
So rain guards, which are looking at?
Yeah, so I did, it's more than a rain guard, it's almost like a bio basin. The rain guards are cute and cheeky, but they're real small. This thing's got a little bit more hydraulic mass to it, it's got a little bit of translational performance, so I'll be able to capture and treat, because we're in the East Hudson watershed, we had to go for a higher storm event, for the approval. So I just upsized the pond a little bit bigger, so it's a better C wise. And you do accept and capture that two-year storm event and almost a ten-year storm event, any basin would not let it go. So that helps me hydraulically, you tend to where you can close off property. Again, take it from where it is, it's a half acre disturbance on the individual residence lot, so. It's taking care of the stormwater, it's like you have.
Those are three lots on the left, Richard?
That's correct, yes.
One of which has a house?
Yeah, yeah, the one existing house, we also determined, because it was in the D E C's, it's more of a rehab type project, it's using existing foundation, driveway, crossing, all done with this, the wetlands, you know, existing driveway. And it's really, uh, what we're doing is an enhancement, which will be more in kind of a civic sort of one of these, which essentially was kind of a semi-urbanic full plan with some post-construction stuff, and so far as, I decided to infiltrate it with a roof, just to catch whatever's going, because, you know, the wetlands aren't too far away. But that's almost similar, I'm going to get it to a full, full one. But everything's kind of stayed the same, well, there's a disturbance, I haven't changed it. It can be a little bit bigger because now I've kind of included D E C now at the bottom of the swing here. For the most part, it's pretty contained.
So tonight's goal is just to update us, is that...
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, this is one of those projects that gives the target early, so it's going to end up. So now I'm here to say that, you know, if we move forward on this part of the project, this is a health department's approval, the U D's approval. I think what looks out for there, except for this, I mean, it's housekeeping stuff with the town.
Yeah, you know, obviously, uh, some of the legal stuff, too, because the way that swarm water ramps are set up is that it's for, we're not encouraged or forced to, or obligated, I should say, to make sure that there's post-construction swarm water maintenance agreement that the town has, uh, you know, rights but not obligations to make sure that the people are still maintaining the swarm water structures that were shown and approved on their lots. So it's, um, it's something that has to be done as part of the approval processes, part of the reviewing of the technical, how the ponds function, but then how it's gonna be maintained afterwards, and how we can make sure that it's maintained afterwards.
So does that become a covenant in their deed?
We've, we've done it that way in certain areas, yes. Basically, we'll be normally asking for it to be put into the deed as the operation and maintenance, and then that agreement, the agreement will include the operation and maintenance schedule so that it's pretty clear somebody is buying it, that there are, there is, you know, swarm water practices that have to be maintained.
Yes, transfer of ownership, too. Once, once the owner buys it, he has obligations, they're signed off on their documents. You know, he's aware, or the owners make aware of what they're obligated to.
It goes on the file, actually?
Yeah, it's on the file.
Like, if you have a deed, it'd be more...
If someone had received it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, the typical homeowner, you know, they'll just disconnect their storm drain from their roof and just say, ah... A difficult homeowner, you know, they'll just disconnect their storm drain from their roof and just say, I, I don't need this anymore. But, you know, it gives us the, uh, the, the right, but not the obligation. If we wanted to, uh, follow upon any of that, that we can go ahead and find that. So even the new M S four permit now is requiring, uh, more correspondence on, from the people, making sure that they're maintaining it, so there's gonna have to be some correspondence to periodically from the owners of these stormwater management practices saying, yes, we've been maintaining, here's some records, and here's an inspection by a professional in the air. So that's, uh, and, and this is obviously sensitive area, if you saw that some watershed, which was why there's the moment that require, uh, more treatment than might be usual.
People received, uh, variants for scenic over line, uh, border? If I remember correctly?
They, it's a scenic road, scenic road, it's a scenic watershed over line. And, um, and they had met the front setback for that and did the.
For the backup, uh, septic areas, and then the trees were.
Yeah, there, there had to be, you know, just based on, there, this was one of those ones where either, if you asked them to push it even further back, now they're getting into the steep slopes in the back.
So it was a bad risk against the dog.
Yeah, and that, that's pretty steep.
Yep, so you have that. Have you, this, what type of street is that on the right?
Uh, the, the one, when we say the right, and you're looking at the property, it actually comes in from the left?
The, the road is to my back and I'm facing cliffs.
Yeah, so there's, uh, there's, well, there's a, a small stream, it's not identified, but it's part of the old core wetlands that was eliminated. And then that passes into the D E C waters across the street, which is on the, um, the camp side.
So they weren't delineated?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so those were located setbacks, well, identified, D E C side off on the, on the course I had on this. And so the only, who said it was a stormwater, or business. Part of the pushback is that the exact thing that Dan was talking about, all the, the, the streams that are attached to a future homeowner now, about maintenance and something like that, so I was trying to avoid building or any, or, or any of those other, it's a simple trade to see proof. Monday, and it's, it's hard to talk about those storms, you have a garden. But, uh, this, the, the stormwater stuff, it would have been the, uh, sort of collar part of the D E C for the rest of your life, because it seemed kind of, uh, dull. And I think there's an annual, even an annual permit fee for that.
Welcome to New York.
Yeah, you know, exactly.
It's like. The violas, but, but, but they do, um, the D E C relies on the town.
That's the problem.
To, uh, to do, to enforce it, so.
But this is also federal clean water right, so.
Yeah.
You gotta thank Washington too.
The little trickles down in somewhere.
Yeah, exactly. I thought that was nineteen seventy five, I think, right, so.
Things other than stormwater running out, hell.
So, but anyways, this is, this is where we're at, sort of, you know, the last statement, I think, where, like you said, the new order pretty early in the past couple of weeks. But then, the D E C structure, it's heard, uh, it was, it's really going bad, so. We'll give it to you tonight and hopefully, uh, box some time, because hopefully, we'll continue on our quest for improvement. Hopefully, we go to the guys in the state as well, we're out.
So just one thing for the record, so the changes in the stormwater, it doesn't change any lock configuration, driveway, it's only?
Everything stayed exactly the same, I just introduced things in and around the given spaces. I mean, again, the biggest thing was the, uh, rain guard, but I had a, a kind of a new one here. Where the driveway work and the grades worked out at the core of the property, so. It added, went zero to two, uh, speakers, uh, two purvey series, a large, uh, service, you know, disturbance to the general property, so.
That's the balance, you know?
Yes.
More stormwater treatment, more disturbance chat.
Right. It's kinda happy. So, I guess that's it, I think it's over tonight.
So, so at this point, today is actually the, the exploration of the current last extension. So, the board can choose any timeframe that it might wanna wish to have, um, added on. And I'll, um, I'll write something up to that effect.
Oh, okay.
Well, again, Dan's office confirms of what we've done here, it'll reproduce this for the other two lots fairly quickly, you know, next time. Um, then it obviously, his office is gonna have to review it, probably back to court a few days, there's a lot of, lots of balls in here, so. I don't know, sixty days?
Well, we're coming back, getting it signed in five, right?
Uh, to satisfy the conditions of the approval, so we can get it signed, yeah.
And this is one of the last conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you're basically saying you're gonna forget it all for twice?
No. All is full.
Anybody?
What's it about?
We absolutely did not.
He's very careful with his communication.
All right, I'll make, I think with the legal agreement and everything else, I think it would be appropriate if the board would, would consider it would be ninety days. Which would, um, which would bring it to May fifteenth, two thousand twenty four. That's my opinion.
I, he clearly is making every attempt and effort to move expediently with this. And so, you know, genuine attempt to get this done, so I, I'm inclined to give you the ninety days.
Mr.? I'm good.
You want a second, James? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyway, that's through May fifteenth, two thousand twenty four.
Okay.
Sure, everybody's time, that's true. Can this be it?
All right. Yeah, feel free to send that by me after.
Yeah, no. And again, there's big drawers, you know, the details and stuff like that, it's a lot of options. So, there's a twenty scale, we need to.
Awesome.
Give it to Eric, so.
Yeah, that would be great.
All right, thank you. Good night all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. We made a motion to close the meeting. Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
So, that's it.